Okay, well, we've got four of us here and I think we certainly can get underway. Deb may be delayed, hopefully not too long. Okay. This is the October 3rd, 2023 Planning Board meeting. It is 7:01 by my PC. And we'll just introduce ourselves before we get on to the agenda. I'm Brian Murphy, the Chair.
Ray Cook, Planning Board member.
Anne Bardine, Planning Board member.
Tim Cronin, Planning Board member.
And then Sue, Sue Brown, you can take a bow, our town planner.
Hi, Sue Brown, Town Planner.
There you go. Okay. All right, so our first item on our agenda is the Continued Public Hearing of 26 Church Street. The Special Permit for a Kennel in a Residential District. I move to open the, the hearing. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Brian Murphy, I.
Ray Cook, I.
Tim Cronin, I.
All four members in the affirmative. And as I know, we are still waiting for our fifth member, Deb Hamilton. I don't know where she is, but we will continue. Okay, I have a couple notes here I wanted to read. Just explain what we're going to be doing tonight. Among other things, certainly the Planning Board is going to discuss our thoughts on this special permit. We will hear any new comments from, from both the applicant and the butters. We'd ask that we not have a, a repeat of what was said at the, at the last hearing. We all made notes and so if there's new, new commentary, that, that certainly would be welcome. Let's see, just to recap, special permit rules require a vote of four Planning Board members in the affirmative to approve a special permit. Yeah, if somebody, if you could just mute yourselves, what was chatting out there? Thank you. So it does require a vote of four members in the affirmative. During this meeting tonight, we will review the criteria the Planning Board uses to determine the findings on a special permit and whether we vote for or against that, that permit. We will discuss those. There's five findings that we, we need to discuss. At, at a point, we will close the hearing to public comment after we hear public comment and further comment and, and discuss amongst ourselves. Any vote will be made at a future date. It will not be tonight, but Planning Board members may express their opinion during this discussion that we're going to have tonight. And before we start, I wanted to check in with Sue. She and I had a discussion about a matter with the town clerk and kennel licenses. I'm curious if you had any updates you wanted to share with us.
Um, sure. So my understanding is that the town is looking to clarify its kennel licensing. There was a, an assumption that it, that a kennel license maybe was only for a commercial use, but we have since determined, looking at the state's regulations and that it, that you can get a kennel license for your own pack. The, the state defines a kennel as a pack of dogs. So we think that that is what the license is intended. So you can get a kennel license for your pack of dogs. And they're hoping to clarify that in their regulations regarding the license.
How many, how many is a pack?
Who, who is, who is speaking? Uh, we, we're not going to take public comments here, but okay, if that's a member of the public. It wasn't a board member, I don't think.
No, um, but I, I can clarify that. So the licensing has a pack is, they can get a pack for four up to 10 or over 10. And the town also hopes to identify what they would consider a personal kennel, which may be more limited than over 10. It may be 10 or under or, or some other number, but that's what they're going to clarify.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. That's, that's helpful. Do board members have, have any further comment that they wish to make tonight? And I, I will say that I have gone by the property and walked by it. And that helped me form an opinion about where, where this, where the application is. So, Anne?
I just have a quick question on what Sue just mentioned. I feel like it's, there's a somewhat of an ambiguity that's just been introduced, which is that the town needs to clarify and will clarify something, but do we know who in the town will make that decision? And when? We could expect to hear it?
Yeah, that's a great, great question, Anne, and I'm not sure who makes the decision. My conversation was with the town clerk. And he's the one that had reviewed the, you know, the state regulations, state licensing. Basically ours mimics the state licensing. But I, I might assume that it's a, it's more than a discretionary clerical change. And I'm, I would assume that probably it's a decision from the Select Board. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the town bylaws fall under the Select Board's purview, not the Planning Board.
Yes, and licensing.
And, and of course, yes, you're right. Yeah. Ray, yes?
I'd just like to point out to everybody here that in the zoning bylaw, which is what we're talking about implementing tonight, there's a formal definition of kennel. And that's keeping four or more dogs three months or older. So litter of puppies, puppies are generally held for about two months before they're passed along. So puppies don't count in that. So it's four or more dogs, three months or older on a single premise, whether maintained for breeding, boarding, sale, training, hunting, or other purposes, and including any shop where dogs are customarily kept for sale. So the zoning bylaw does have a formal definition of kennel. And it falls within that number that you mentioned that the state uses for a pack of dogs. But last time we met, there was a lot of discussion about litters of puppies and whatnot. And, you know, going back and reading this definition was useful to me.
Yeah, I, I do find the, the state, you know, comment of pack of dogs is kind of interesting. I don't think it implies what people normally would assume a pack is. Might a pack of coyotes or something perhaps, but.
Well, you know, maybe it has origins with sled dogs.
Yeah. Good point. Good point. Tim, did you have any thoughts, you know, just before we?
No, like you, Brian, I, I've gone by the property a couple of times, at different times a day, just to, you know, become more reacquainted with it and to listen. So.
Good. Okay, thank you.
I've done that.
Okay, so let's start with the Castros. Do you have anything you wish to add tonight? Either Chris or Sean Castro, the applicants.
Yes, good evening. I was going to do a general recap, but as you stated, not to really introduce any old data. I would like to clarify that it is an eight dog kennel. It'd be one dog per kennel. And that Sean does have a full-time job at Fox Hill Farm, which he will retain. And when he goes to Fox Hill Farm Monday through Friday, he brings six dogs with him. So if there's only eight dogs on the premises, only two will be left behind. With supervision, either his wife working remote or my wife will be there. And I do have my wife here with us today. If you guys have any questions, she does care for the dogs two days out of the week, as I mentioned last time. And she's inside and outside with the.
There's a Planning Board meeting about the.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Castro, and this is either for you or for Sean, a question I have. Can you just recap how many dogs are considered yours? And you may have told us before back in my notes, and I apologize if you did.
That's okay.
I, I, I think there was, there was some confusion on, on that point. At least in my mind.
Six.
Okay.
So we had puppies that were sold, reduced the number. And so there's currently six on the premises at the moment.
Right. And it would be your, your intent anyway, once the town quote clarifies their handling of this kennel licensing, that you will proceed with obtaining the necessary tags, et cetera, for those dogs?
Yes.
That, that has been done already, Brian? So all six are registered with the town?
Well, I was able to register three, but I'm, there's no form to register more than three currently with the town without going through the special permit, so.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, I thought there's a, there's a confusion with this, so.
Yeah, so I was able to do three and then I sent at least the paperwork for the other three, but nothing can be kind of done until the special permit is.
Finalized.
Well, yeah, I think, you know, it's something we'll, we'll talk about. You know, we're, we're not in the licensing business and, and I do think there's a, you know, a defect in the town regulations that has been brought to fore here. That, that, that needs to get clarified. If they're considered your dogs, you shouldn't need to get a special permit for your dogs. Running a business or having a business application there, that's a special permit issue. So. And I, I should make note that Deb Hamilton has joined us for the hearing. Hello, Deb.
Hello, sorry I'm late.
Nope, nope. Our fifth Planning Board member. Yes, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. And, and did you, did you have anything else you wanted to add at the moment to either one of you?
I do, if I can take over the floor for a minute, that'd be great. I wanted to reference the zoning bylaw 5 dot A dot 3 dot B, which states riding stables, kennels, animal hospitals, or veterinary are valid uses for the property with a special permit, which is the process we're going through. I believe we demonstrated during the last meeting that we've met the criteria of items one through four under this bylaw. The word, three or four concerns that I'd like to address from the butters, if I can go over those, please. First one was excessive use of water having a kennel. The previous owner had two horses. Horses drank on an average of five to 20 gallons per day. Times two would be 10 to 40 gallons of water per day. 10 dogs will not come close to that amount of water. Therefore, minimal water use will be consumed. There was some concern that it might be a, a drought and excess water use would be unfavorable. The second one is waste disposal. Solid waste would be picked up daily, bagged, and disposed of properly. If it ever became necessary, we could obtain a four-yard dumpster. I had also reached out to the building, I'm sorry, the plumbing inspector regarding the floor drains. And he stated and confirmed that we would need a holding tank on site for this application. What that means is we'd have to have it pumped out on an annual basis, depending on how much use it saw. And it would be no contamination to the soil around the kennel at all if we used the, the holding tank process. Another concern was noise. Church Street is not a quiet street by any means. There is other dog noise that exists. Daily traffic consists of cars, motorcycles, school buses, delivery and large construction vehicles. The speed limit is 40 miles per hour on the street. The road noise is consistent, therefore I would not classify this as a quiet neighborhood setting. Another concern was decrease in property value of existing homeowners. Sue, could I ask you to post the picture or the file of Kimball Road, please?
Yes, one moment.
So that the board can see it? Thank you. Anyway, flipping that, Sue? To the right? No? Okay. All right, so that's fine. We'll leave it as is, Sue. That's like, that's good. So the, the red arrow that I located here is a picture of, of Fox Hill Farms, which is a five-acre property. They board and train horses and dogs. The highlighted dollar amounts that you see in this picture are two properties that just sold within this past year. One sold for over $100,000 of asking price. The other one sold for $42,000 over asking price. So I don't believe a 924 square foot kennel with eight dogs is going to devalue the property on Church Street. As you can see, this is heavily residential populated too, this road, unlike Church Street. Can I ask you to put up Church Street? Actually, yeah, folder or file, please. And I think, again, the red arrow locates where the kennel would be, which is behind the barn. For those of you that walked by or drove by, you can better visualize. But you can see the surrounding tree line. Nowhere, nowhere's near like what was on Kimball Road. A lot of residents nearby. I think the property is well-suited for the kennel. And then lastly, if you could post the picture of the kennel, Sue?
Is this the one that you're looking for?
The new kennel, please. Yeah.
Let me see. Can you see that?
Not yet.
Oh, how about now?
There we go.
Sorry.
So this is the proposed kennel. You did see it last time. We put a lot of time and effort and expense into having this grown up so that it fits the landscape. It fits the surroundings of the neighborhood. It's not visible by, from the street. I just wanted to recap. It is a nicely done kennel. It's not just a throw-up type kennel area. And then lastly, at the end of the meeting last, in the last meeting, we had a resident who we don't know personally speak up unsolicited feedback on Sean's character and the reputation of Fox Hill Farms. This is representative of the type of business Sean will run. We sought the direction of multiple town departments to submit a complete and thorough application. And we respectfully request the approval of our special permit. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Castro and Sean. Board members have questions or comments on those statements?
Question or comment on those statements? I found it helpful. Thanks. I do have a question regarding the number of dogs because now I'm confused about what, what is your intention regarding the number of dogs that you'd seek for the kennel license at this point? The last time, I believe you referenced 10 or more was going to be the request. I'm just wondering if that's still the case.
Yes, that is correct.
But really don't plan on having more than 10.
Okay, when you, when you have an eight dog kennel though, why the 10 or more? Just curious.
Well, I have my six. And then some will still remain like in the house. Like I have house dogs as well. So not all of my dogs will be down there per se. Some will be. And then I just wanted to be within the guidelines of the town, just in case, for whatever reason, I take on one extra dog instead of, like if I have only a couple of dogs down in the kennel and I've taken on one or two dogs and let's say one's going home within the next week or so, and then I have another one that I could potentially start training, it could put me over the number of like an eight dog kennel license. But I am trying to stay within the guidelines of the town and not go over the number that I'm permitted, pretty much.
Right?
Yeah, no, I see you, Ray. Yep, go ahead. Ray?
So I think one of the things that's confusing to everybody here, and I think I've got it figured out, but I could be corrected, is there are two different issues which we're getting confused. One is the kennel. And the kennel is the actual shelter for the dogs. And the other is the number of dogs under ownership or being kept by an individual. And I think those are two separate things. So I think your kennel license would be for eight dogs or, you know, fewer than 10. I'm looking over the, the bylaw. So not, so that would be not more than 10 dogs because that's licensing the physical structure that's housing the animals. Something that I can't find clarity on is the number of dogs permitted to be owned by a particular person. And that in itself would also be confused because there are going to be dogs owned by other people that you're taking care of for training purposes or for running your business. And I think that would fall under keeper of the dogs or having custody or control of the dogs. No person owning, harboring, or having custody or control of a dog. So that's, that's in our, in our, so for everybody here, there's the town bylaws and then there's the zoning bylaws. And there's some overlap here that's also confusing people. It makes sense for everything to be consistent. And when we're talking about the licensing of the dogs and the kennel license, that's under the town's bylaws, not the zoning bylaw. Whether or not a person is allowed to have a physical structure that contains dogs, that's a kennel. And that's under the zoning bylaw, which is sort of the Planning Board purview here. So there are a bunch of different things that are confusing people. And I would say with respect to the Castros, that you're seeking a special permit to have a kennel. And the kennel is being built for eight dogs. And so that's the issue before, in my mind, unless I'm corrected by other Planning Board members or the town planner, in my mind, that's what we're talking about here. The number of dogs that you are harboring is a different issue and, and not actually specifically germane to the special permit. So, so that's how I'm trying to tease things out. And I would appreciate any feedback from my colleagues here on the Planning Board and from Sue, the Town Planner.
Yeah, Ray, I think the, the point that I was getting at, and thank you, you know, for pointing that out, the distinction, is that, you know, we have an eight dog kennel, but it appears that, you know, the business, as you call it, would be involving 10 dogs.
Or more.
More, or more.
Yeah, because there's, you know, we, do we have, I mean, it's of interest to the butters and the residents of the town in general. Everybody's curious about how many dogs would be on the property. That's different than the number of dogs that would be housed by the kennel. And I, you know, I mean, there's, there are laws about when you have a pigery under the, under the bylaws. And, you know, there are laws with respect to cattle. But as far as a limit to the number of dogs that can be harbored on a property, I don't find that, which is actually a little unsettling. So I, I, you know, unless I'm wrong here, and it looks like Ann unmuted, and, you know, I know that Deb has a lot of experience in this area as well. I, I wanna, I wanna know, first of all, have I got it right teasing out the difference between the structure in which you have dogs and the number of dogs being harbored on a property?
So, I think you're right that there is a distinction there, but I think that the way the bylaw, the zoning bylaw maybe is written, and the way the town clerk is interpreting it, I still find confusing, because he's, it would seem to me that if I moved to town, I have five dogs, I would go to license my dogs, they would say, well, you've got more than three dogs, you need what we call a kennel. And rather than just giving me a kennel license and making that subject to whatever it's subject to, the town clerk is interpreting it to mean, and therefore you are running a kennel. Which I think is a distinction, and I'm not sure that he sees that as a distinction. So I, this is very, very confusing to me. The other thing that did occur to me as you were talking, Ray, is these dogs that are coming from the training facility and maybe spending some time there or whatever, they typically are owned by someone, if someone in Salisbury brings their dog to this Amesbury facility, presumably their dog is licensed in the town of Salisbury, or in Rhine, New Hampshire, wherever the dog lives with its owner. And now it's temporarily undergoing a training program, well, that's got nothing to do with West Newbury licensing, you know, it's sort of a temporary resident there, so I think it really gets confusing.
But, but that, that is the business application, you know, that he's, he's seeking a business use to do that. I think if we were sitting here just talking about the, the five or six dogs that he has today, and the confusion a town clerk has, it'd be easy, we'd tell them, withdraw his special permit application, and get the town regulations sorted out. But this is, this is a, he's stated a desire to do a business here, and I, I think that's the fundamental issue.
But I think it's a hybrid, part of what he's doing.
Oh, no doubt, I agree.
I keep coming back to, again, we have, we have the bylaws and the zoning bylaws. The definition of the zoning bylaw is that the kennel is a facility for keeping four or more dogs. And, and unlike other places in the town bylaw, not the zoning bylaw, the bylaw, that says if you've got four pigs, you've got a piggery. But I don't find any, any law written in West Newbury that says if you have five dogs, your house is now considered a kennel. Because to me, a kennel, and I'm just reading the, the, the text as written in the zoning bylaw, it says a facility for keeping four or more dogs. And, and so, you know, the building that the Castros are proposing is most definitely a kennel, and the number of dogs that would be in that kennel is eight, and I don't know that there's anything in town laws that regulate how many additional dogs are harbored on the property as a whole.
Right.
So they could have eight dogs in the kennel, and twelve dogs in the house, God bless them if they do, right, but, no, no, I know they're shaking their heads, no, but I'm, I'm just saying.
Understood.
Yeah, so Deb, you, I cut you off.
No, you didn't. I, I will also, I would point out, though, that the eight, eight pens and interior rooms in the kennel could house more than one dog in each pen as well. I, if I had females that were in season, you know, I could put two of them in, or if I had a litter of puppies, there might be a bitch and four puppies in there. So, there could be more than eight dogs in the kennel.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I had one other kind of vexing question, if you don't mind.
No, no, no.
Yeah, it's regarding the breeds, I just wanted to revisit that. Is, is there no restriction on the breeds of, of the dogs that would be there, or are there, you know, certain breeds that would not be on the premises?
And I, I would just jump in there, Tim, that I don't think you can, I mean, we all know that different breeds tend towards different behaviors, but I don't know that, that there's any rational way that you could define what breeds should be allowed and shouldn't be allowed. I mean.
Insurance, insurance can be an issue. Certain breeds' insurance, for homeowners' insurance are not as desirable, and it's tough to get homeowners' insurance.
Right, but as soon as, you could have a cane corso, that's a three-quarter cane corso and one-quarter something else, and now it's a mutt and not a cane corso. And, and there are hundreds and hundreds of different breeds.
Yeah.
There have been cities that have tried to, like, have special treatment of pit bulls, for example, and those laws have been struck down over time, because it just doesn't work. So I, I appreciate that people are concerned, nobody wants some sort of vicious set of dogs that somehow break loose and attack the neighborhood, but, you know, there, there are sweet pit bulls out there, and there are golden retrievers that bite like crazy, so it's, I don't think you, that... I think, I think that we could reasonably put conditions on this special permit, limiting the number of adult dogs as defined already by the zoning bylaw, which would exclude the puppies three months or, or less.
The only reason I'm revisiting it and was asking the Castros was because we had a little bit of a discussion about it the last time, it appeared to be some conflicting information about that.
Right.
Okay, that's all I had, thanks.
That's fine, good, thank you. So let's hear from other citizens on, on this, if please either use the, where is the hand feature, or you can speak up, but you'll just have to identify yourself. And again, let's try to have new information or questions related to items that have been discussed here tonight. Thank you. Who wants to go first?
All right, this is Peter Nolan.
Peter Nolan, yes, Peter, hello.
Hi. Can I jump in here with my wife, Phyllis?
Yes, of course.
All right. It seems to me that Mr. Castro has applied for one special permit to run two businesses as residents. His own dog training and kennel business in whole, and some kind of partnership with Fox Hill and K9 of Amesbury to train and kennel dogs owned by Fox Hill or in their care. Does West Newbury Special Permit zoning allow for two businesses in one residential location? Shouldn't Fox Hill ownership be required to apply for a special permit as well?
Well, it's an interesting question, I, I think he's doing it as an adjunct to his, his employment there, and, you know, I, the, the special permit, whoever's residing at that location, Fox Hill doesn't really have any, any, any stake in, in that location, other than their employee lives there. So I, I, I think there'd be no need for a second, two permits, but.
Well, I'd have to point out that they, they do in fact have a vested interest, because they are going to own the dogs that are at Church Street, and those are dogs.
They're under their, they're under their employees.
Trying to make a point.
You, you.
Those, those dogs are, are being kennelled and trained for commercial purposes, to make a profit when they sell those dogs, or when they train those dogs. Shouldn't we be hearing from the ownership of those dogs, and, and shouldn't they be applying for some type of special permit here?
I don't believe so.
And is it, nobody answered my first question, can you, can you run two businesses off one special permit?
Well, I, I'm not sure I agree that he's running two businesses off of a special, he's getting a special permit, he's seeking a special permit for a kennel operation there, at that location.
Yeah, some of his dogs.
Again, I gotta jump in, Brian, I disagree with you. He's seeking a permit to have a, he's seeking a special permit to have a, a kennel in our residents A, B, or C district. And again, by the zoning bylaw, we're just talking about the facility here, we're not talking about the business side of things. The special permit is whether or not you're allowed to have the structure.
Who's Brad, I'm not sure.
I mean, there, there are other things, like, you know, that by special permit does imply the business, for example, a veterinary, you know, or an animal.
I, I think a kennel business, you know, the implication is there that it, it is a business. We have another.
I, I don't disagree with you, I'm just trying to read the letter of the law, because this is, so many people are, have a, a passion, I, I'm picking up a passionate interest in this, and I'm trying to stick by the letter of the bylaw as written.
Okay, other, other comments?
Yeah, if nobody else wants to speak, I'll, I'll make some other points that I think are breaking the ground. However, I'd have to say that it's still not clear how many dogs are going to be at the property, still not clear.
I, I don't disagree with you.
And, and that's, that's a major question, I mean, the Castros want ten or more, and in the previous meeting, they stated several times, they want to have ten to eighteen dogs there, stated that several times. They also said that there'll be twelve dogs outside during the day, and also that they would have one to two litters per year, adding probably six dogs at a time. So, we're talking a lot more than ten dogs.
No, no, your, your, your point is well taken there, so. And, and is, and is noted.
Do we speak, Brian?
Castro, yes.
So I'm an independent contractor for Fox Hill Farm, and they would basically just be giving people my, like, recommendation to go through me if, if they weren't, if they didn't want to take on the dog, or, let's say, they were filling up and they gave me the opportunity to take the dog, I'm not taking their, the dog that's going through them necessarily, they would be recommending me to the owners of those dogs, if, if that's what they were looking to do for that instance. I don't really plan on ever having more than ten dogs. In the town, on the town paperwork, there's only options for ten and up, there's nothing for ten and under. So that's why I've stated that I'd be applying for the ten and up, I don't have any intentions of having more than ten at all. I think there's a little confusion from when someone asked how many dogs I typically care for at Fox Hill Farm on a daily basis, it could be anywhere from ten to eighteen, but they also have multiple employees that run their business as well. For me, being one person or one or two people, either being my fiance or mom, ten dogs would be more than plenty for me to care for. I obviously care for six now, and, and very fluent in how I do it, and consistent on who goes out and when. I'm very cautious of when they are going out, and noise when they are going out. Also, I don't plan on having twelve dogs out during the day, ever, especially at one time.
It'd be impossible.
And I may personally have one to two litters, that's if I have it, I've been doing this for eight years, and I've had one litter in that whole eight years, so it's not something that I'm going to consistently do, it's just, it's a potential possibility in the dog business world. Thank you.
I, I have a follow-up on that. I think I heard you just say that you're an independent contractor.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I think I was under the impression you're an employee of Fox Hill.
I work, I work there, but I am.
Yep, he's got more than one job.
Yeah. So Sean has. I'll tell you, one, one of my concerns, Sean, here, is, is if you were to sever your relationship with Fox Hill, and, you know, where, where things go for you from there, and then, then we're really in a situation where you may want to try to do more things at that property in line with dog training, and, and you may say there's no chance that would happen, but now hearing that you're an independent contractor, it makes me wonder about that. And that puts a little bit different flavor on things.
The building that we proposed is the extent of how far I can go with that property. Like I said, I'm one person, and I don't have any intentions on going any bigger than what I have planned in the drawings. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Are there other public comments here, please? It's okay to speak up, or anyone wishes to talk? Or chat in the text box, or whatever, okay? So members of the board, and if someone has other questions at some point, just speak up until we decide to close the hearing. I, I do want to have a discussion about, you know, the findings or whatnot, and I think I'm looking for, do we want to have a discussion before we close the public hearing, or close the hearing and then have that discussion about the findings?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, Tim raised the question of what breeds you're typically going to be having there, could you just run through a specific list of the breeds, the size of dogs, the duration of time that they're likely to be there, could you just be a little more, give us a little clarity? You know, we're not talking Yorkshire terriers here, what have we got?
The breed can really vary based on what the need is. Obviously, German Shepherds, Belgian Shepherds, Labs, a lot of doodles are being used for the comfort dogs now. Like I said, those are, those are probably the top choices of what we see on a daily basis. But it, it could go from anywhere to a Great Dane for a stability dog as well. So size could be anywhere from probably thirty-five to seventy-five, eighty-pound dogs potentially.
Well, I mean, my golden retriever weighs ninety-two.
Yeah, so, I mean, it can really, it's hard to specify the exact size and breed, seeing that there are such a various needs for each.
And would you characterize most of what you're doing, you keep using the term comfort dogs? And I, I think that the general concern is that, that these are cordial, good neighbor type dogs, that you're not doing protection training and police work on the property, is that true?
I do, I don't do what's called protection work, I do, I compete in a sport that has that in it, I, you need multiple people to do that. The sport I do, it's, it's a game to the dog. When I hear protection, I think of personal protection dogs that are trained to see a situation or react out in a way to scare someone. The dogs I own, it's very keyed in on the setting and the picture that's presented to them, so there's a person with the toy, they're trained to bark at the person, and they get the toy. So what I do is a sport, it's basically the breed survey test for a lot of these dogs. A lot of it comes down to obedience and control work. So, no, I'm not looking to go out and do a lot of that at the property at all, it's the only thing I can really do is a lot of obedience where I'm located, and plus, you need multiple people to do, like I said, a lot of the stuff I do in the sport. I'm interested in doing a lot of service type dogs. We do, we get a lot of inquiries about service dogs, and we just don't have, like, at the facility, we're busy enough with other board and train dogs that need our help. with other border and train dogs that need our help fixing behaviors. We don't have a lot of they don't have a lot of time in being able to raise dogs for people that are in need of them because there is such a not drought, but there's there's a high demand for those kinds of dogs. And it's people are having a hard time with getting them. So I want to be able to help. Those kind of people have dogs that actually need them. Um, and if they were in need of help of raising and training, to have a place to be able to do that as well.
Thank you. Ray?
So a couple of things, uh, one for everybody here. Um, um, I'm registered with a therapy dog organization and my dog and I um, go into hospitals, schools, we're about to go to the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. That's my background. Um, there are therapy dog teams that are registered. Is, um, and and therapy dog is defined by the AKC. Um, to my knowledge, comfort dog is is not a well-defined term. And I know there are police departments that have comfort dogs, but those comfort dogs do not have registration with a therapy dog organization. There are separate evaluations for therapy dogs. Service dogs are different than comfort and therapy dogs in that service dogs actually help a human with a specific shortcoming. A therapy dog can't go into a restaurant, for example, uh, uh, well, a therapy dog can be denied going into a restaurant, but a service dog cannot be. So all these definitions can confuse people. Um, and and the training is different for all these dogs. Uh, normally for a therapy dog, you have to get your AKC, uh, canine good citizen first, and then you go on for a separate evaluation to, uh, which is very hard. Um, now, the the other thing is, again, I have scanned the town of West Newbury bylaws. And I don't find anything in there that says if you have four or more dogs or X or more dogs, you are required uh, to uh, get a kennel license. I've read, I've read it all as carefully as I can. So to the casters, I ask, is is anybody told you you have to have a kennel license?
Uh, I was under the impression that I needed to have a special permit and kennel license even for my own personal dogs regardless.
Gotcha. See, this is where I I'm a little confused, uh, Brian, um, in the town because as far as I read it, anybody in town can have more than four or five dogs in their residence, in their in in their house. Um, it's clear to me that the kennel is the physical facility. I agree with you, Brian, that it is implied, uh, as a use in our special permit section 5A3. And by calling the kennel a use, you're implying sort of a commercial business that's being allowed in the residence. And that lines up with things like, uh, uh, riding stables, which a riding stable would be a use, would be a business. So I think we've got those two issues, the total number of dogs on the premises and then the number of dogs that are being, uh, that are engaged in Mr. Castro's business of training. And he could have his personal animals that he competes with and does everything that are kept in the house. That's separate, I think, from animals where he's being paid to provide a service in training or other things to the dog. So that this is, this is still to my mind, an open issue. And I see you.
Yeah, I I wanted to, uh, connect to what Ray just said. I think though, the Greg, you got to look for under, um, the town clerk's office or the animal control officers. If you go to license your dogs, as Sean mentioned about the application form, if you have more than three, the term of art for what you need, the name of it is a kennel license, which as I understand it, uh, has to do with the state's, shall we call it nomenclature? And I I too see that as very distinct, you know, as a term of art from a kennel that's a facility. And I think there's some, to me, some confusion in the clerk's office, frankly. Um, that when you come in and say, I need a kennel license, your regs say, I need it because I have five dogs. The the conclusion was come to, it was concluded that that had to do with a special permit kennel. And I, to me, there's some there's not a clear connection between those two things.
And and we have section six of the town of West Newbury bylaws, section six is the animal bylaw. And although they say animal, it's all about dogs. And they go into detail about the animal control officer and, you know, how you have to maintain those dogs. If a dog is in heat, what you have to do. Uh, warnings, offenses, fines, restraint of dogs, that's all part of the bylaws, not the zoning bylaws.
Right.
But again, I mean, I think everybody sort of understands that if you have four or more dogs, you need this. But I don't see anything that says that you actually do. And you might be right. There might be a state statute.
It's in the, it's in the clerk's list of of how you.
But I don't, I don't trust a clerk's list. I I trust, I trust, I mean, because we can make lists and and checklists and all that kind of stuff and not have it right.
No, I agree with you that this, I mean, this confusion started for me about 10 days ago when I went to get clarification at the clerk's office and then spoken to the building inspector and I I still don't feel like it's straightened out.
Well.
Maybe Brian.
Before we, um, move ahead here and I don't know who was chatting there. Um, and to discuss the findings, I'm, uh, for me, for this board member, and with the confusion that seems to reign at the town clerk's office and whatnot, I would urge the casters to withdraw their special permit application. And seek, um, clarification through the town clerk and the select board. And if necessary, you, uh, you can return. Um, we for the business side of things, which I I think is what you are here for. Maybe you maybe you don't think you are, but I'm looking at it. This is a business because you've stated you're going to use it in your business. So for this member, I would urge you to withdraw your special permit application before we end up moving to a vote on this. And you should know that once the planning board votes, you either, obviously the special permit is either approved, if it's denied, you cannot return for two years. Uh, for any.
I think, I think Brian, just, and Tim can help me out here. I think what you're suggesting to the casters is that they withdraw the application without prejudice.
Yes, of course, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I I I'm not ready to vote on this. I'm I I I'm not ready to, uh, weigh in on the findings and what's required by our bylaw because of this confusion in my mind. There, you know, there's the physical structure that the castros want to build.
Yeah.
To me, it's clear that they have to go through the special permit process for that. But before we can put conditions on that special permit, you know, there are all these issues about, you know, what's required. I mean, maybe, maybe without even having a structure, they still need a kennel license.
Well, I think he does need a kennel license.
And then, but then what you're saying, well, see, I'm not sure that that's clear. And then what you're saying is that anybody with four or more dogs anywhere in a town residence has to come before the board for a special permit. And and I don't think that's true.
You're muted.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, which is why I think this lack of clarity from the clerk's office has sort of touched this on.
Because there's the building. Yeah.
The 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 stated rationale that I'm seeing here is a business application in this location. And and I'll I'll be very frank, I I have a concern about that. And I I think they would be better off to withdraw without prejudice and try to sort this, the 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 issues out with their dogs. They can't run a business behind the scenes. For sure. That's not what I'm saying. But I think they do need to sort out what the town's regulations require for a kennel license. And I, because if you, if you feel you can't vote on this because of that, well, that's that's a problem. I mean, I guess you could have stayed.
Yeah, I I think, I, and here I I request the town planner where you are, and I see she's got her hand up. But I think, I think that we would be fully justified in consulting with the town's attorneys on this issue as well, maybe get some clarification.
Well.
With town council on on these issues.
So.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, um, on the licensing. Um, and on the licensing, licensing a kennel license simply means that instead of licensing dogs individually, you're licensing a group of dogs. So it is merely, as Ann said, it's just a term from that the state uses to allow someone to license a group of dogs instead of individual licenses. They still are required to provide the paperwork for all of them, but it they don't, they each in each dog doesn't have an individual license. So it's, it has nothing to do with a facility, um, at all. It's just another way to license more than three dogs. And in fact, if you have three dogs, you can choose to have a kennel license, a group license for them. So it really, the licensing really is tied in with the state's, um, rules, licensing rules on this. And, um, it is confusing, but it's just another way to license a group of dogs.
Well, my, my.
The kennel is not, yeah.
That's helpful. My question for the attorney would be, uh, should Brian concur and everybody concur that we could go to the town council on this? But my my question would be, are we licensing the the building or the business?
Right. And it seems like our purview as a planning board is, has to do with the structure rather than the business.
No.
I would say it's a use of the structure.
Use of the property, yeah. Of the property is what he's seeking, and that's why a special permit is required.
Okay, so so I I actually, I'm persuaded by you, Brian, on that. Um, I don't like the fact that the wording here is.
It's squishy, I agree. But I I do, and and and, you know, I'm all for getting town council, but she's going to weigh in and say the town needs to fix their their licensing regulations. I think that's fairly clear.
Yeah, I think this is upstream of of the special permit process, frankly. You know, I I think you you come to town as the castros did and you look for guidance and it's it's inherently conflicting and confusing.
Yes.
So I don't know, just a planning. I I think it's, I think it's the select board, you know, in their uh, supervisory capacity over the town clerk and the, uh, building inspector and all kinds of other people um, to clarify the the licensing side of it.
Well, okay, so there's the licensing of the animals, which I think Sue clarified to my satisfaction. I'm guessing what's going to happen here is the selectmen, uh, and the town manager and even town council will say it's clear enough in your bylaws, it's this, this special permit is the light is permitting the use, permitting the business in a residential area. And, um, and and that we have, we have to step up and 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 vote on it. And I think it's going to come back to us for a vote.
Well, it 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 may very well do that at at some point in time. Um, as as I mentioned a moment ago, you know, I think we have to look at things as if you know, two years from now, if if this board were to grant a, uh, a special permit, uh, Mr. Castro may find that he wants to do training at his house. And really operate the business directly from there. Very different. And and there are, you know, things that that should go into the equation when we look at our findings. So I'm happy to discuss the findings. I still think the best situation right now is for the casters to withdraw without prejudice and, uh, seek clarification with the town and then determine if they wish to come back to before the board for their business application.
Brian? So from day one, we we sought from town departments on how to pursue and go about this. Um, it wasn't until I submitted the building permit for the kennel that we were told by the inspector that we needed a kennel permit, a special permit. That brings us here today. We have done nothing but cooperate with town and done every step by the book to get to where we're at right now. So are you saying that if we withdraw, are we still able to build a kennel for personal use for Sean's dogs?
Uh, that that that's not in my wheelhouse to give you advice on that, sir. Um, you cannot operate a business there.
Good, okay.
Um, that would be a discussion with the the building inspector.
He he's the one directed us to you, though, to go through this process.
Well, because you probably said in in your application, you're running a business.
Yeah, agreed.
If you, if you had only your dogs there, I I I presume you could
He did that before.
Have something that was safe for your animals, but that's not, I I'm not in, I can't interpret a town bylaw or what the building inspector might or might not rule. But if we take this to a vote, um, you know, I I don't know how the other board members feel and as we will discuss these findings. But there there are, there's confusion here. And, uh, if you were to withdraw and, uh, you know, reevaluate your situation, you you may come back or you may decide not to come back.
Do you feel, Brian, that that, uh, we as a planning board have an obligation to the castros and the town overall to seek some clarification from our point, from our side?
Yeah.
I I don't understand.
Well, what you just suggested, that the castros withdraw without prejudice and then that they seek clarification with the town, and then maybe they could come back and seek a special permit in the future. Um, and and to me, that's putting it all on them. Um, whereas I feel that the planning board here, if we're not clear about something, that we have a responsibility to seek that clarification ourselves and not put it all on the castros.
We can, we can move forward and have a discussion of the findings and a vote, and that will be our clarification. We'll either approve it or deny it.
Well, but Brian, I I tend to agree with Ray. You know, as I said, I've spoken with Sue, I've spoken with someone in the clerk's office, I've spoken with Sam, and I, it was not clear to me at the end of those conversations, what was the origin of some of this and what the expectations were.
Um, but the issue at hand is a business application of a kennel in a residential zone. That's what we're here to discuss. There are other details that are unclear about licensing and whatnot. But we are here to discuss a business application.
I I agree with you, Brian.
And whether that business is appropriate for that area, as one of the findings suggests.
Right.
Susan. Yeah, I just wanted the castros to be aware that an approval of a special permit takes for um, a super majority vote from the board. So four of the five members would need to vote um, in the affirmative to grant that permit. I just, if that helps with your decision making, I just wanted you to be aware of that requirement.
And then, and then, uh, Sue, Brian said that if we turn him down, they've got to wait two years before they can apply again. Is there, uh, an appeal that they could embark on if if we turn him down?
Um, so that is unless the, unless they're, um, unless the board agrees to you know, give permission to do that. At least that's the ruling for zoning, so I assume.
If if we turn down the special permit, uh, they could wait two years and apply again, that's what I understand from Brian. Or I'm wondering, do they also have an option to appeal to another authority because they don't feel our decision was just?
Um, so an appeal of the decision goes to the courts.
Superior court or land court?
That's correct.
One or the other. And that could take a couple of years. Could be fast, but it could take a couple of years.
I would only say that the, you know, the other alternative is to you have 90 days to make a decision after you close the public hearing. You could take that time to get clarity before the the vote, but I would need to double check how long you have time to to vote.
Yeah, that 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 might just to query that so that that could involve new information and the hearing has been closed.
That's true.
So I I'm not sure that would.
That's true.
Yeah.
Excuse me, this is Patrick Higgins, 15 cap to pass drive. Can I can I speak, please?
Sure, Patrick.
Yep, just a gentle recommendation. I I there seems to be still not a lot of clarity. And I I think you're treading on a legal fence. And my gentle push would be to seek town council guidance and reviewing town bylaws, town zoning bylaws, and mass general law, chapter 140, that apply to licenses, kennels, training kennels, personal kennels, and make sure that before you close the hearing, you you get all the legal facts, and then if they if the applicants move forward, then you you can close the, you know, decide to move forward, you close the hearing, and and then you you have a basis to make your decision on that is is you know, has a is there's no confusion. You've you've been legal given legal guidance from town council. That's that's my two cents. I think there's a lot of questions still, and and there's a lot of a lot of things in the air regarding personal kennels and training kennels. And if you go to like chapter 140 from the the state and and we review things here, there's a lot of things that could be imposed as part of the special permit to alleviate concerns and and list who can do inspections at any time at a kennel. And but there's a lot of he has at least six personal dogs, and there's going to be other dogs that are coming and go. So I think I think there's a where that is the situation. So I think I would, you know, ask you guys to get some clarity and and it it would take the burden off the applicant to to, you know, because they're they're coming to the town. I don't know if they're getting they're getting multiple directions from everybody. I I think that's confusing as an applicant. So that's my two cents. Sorry to butt in.
Thank you, Patrick. I I agree in general, which is why I suggested that they withdraw their application without prejudice. They came to us with a business in mind with at this address. And that's the reason for the special permit, to operate a business. The other elements are confusing about the the town regulations being unclear about a kennel license. But the underlying issue is a business application for a kennel at that address. So I I'm not sure why we need to totally search out a legal opinion. Are you know, this board has had enough experience to determine whether a business of that sort is appropriate for that neighborhood. But I will defer to the members of the board unless the casters wish to withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah, I've I've just been reading the mass general law.
And I've read through it. It's it's confusing and and it's, yes. But that's not for us to determine that what's before us is a business use in that neighborhood. And we don't know what that business use ultimately will entail, what form or function, once they receive a special permit. So.
That's that's where special conditions can be applied. Am I not correct? I don't know what's confusing about our request.
Well, let me let me just read through the, let me read through the findings, Mr. Castro, for you, okay?
Please.
This is in section 8A 2F. It's on page 71 of the current town bylaws. In granting a special permit, the planning board shall find, A, the specific site is an appropriate location for the use of structure. B, the use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. C, there will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. An adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use, structure, or condition. D, the proposed use or structure will be in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw. And finally, E, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or any other municipal system to such an extent that requested use or developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. So it's a high bar for us to look at any special permit and make sure that all of those findings are checked off properly. And that's what we have to do.
Yeah, I I concur, Brian. I mean, as long as I've been on the planning board, I keep going back and rereading that text over and over again. And yeah. I when the time comes, I I can weigh in with with my opinion as we stand.
I I I can weigh in right now, but I mean, it it's I I'm just looking at the board. If if the board members want to put off, and and I don't know how long we can go and and have this hearing kept open, Sue, can you help me on that? The timeline?
Yeah, the well, there's not a strict timeline, but it has to be reasonable, and you have to be looking at new or provide a reasonable timeline for a decision. If the Castros are not happy with your timeline, but you've already taken all your you know, all your testimony and gathered all your information, then I think that there do a a vote. So.
Yeah, I'm I'm concerned about it being fair to the Castros on a decision as well.
They can they can they can grant, you know, extensions to the 60, you know, to the to the time, but.
But again, the burden that is on us. I mean, why why should we be? The Castros are the ones who want to do this, and they and go back to the town clerk's office and write a letter to the select board and seek clarification, stating that they withdrew their application, their special permit without prejudice.
But but what is it that they need to clarify?
They need to clarify. Well, they don't have their existing dogs are not licensed properly. That that's number one. So they're not in compliance with the town regulations. But that's not our concern.
Agreed. Based on direction from the town, though.
And the town clerk. I have an email going back to the town clerk from January 9th, right after we bought the property, and he never even stated that I should be licensing three of the dogs in the meantime. And when I asked him what I was supposed to do with the other three, I never got an actual answer. So I don't there's nothing else I could have really done with that other than move along with the special permit process, which is the instruction I've been given by pretty much everyone that I've spoken to.
Brian, this is Deanna Castro. I I recognize that this is, you know, challenging for all of you. But I also realize that there should be some level of responsibility or collaboration as a board to work with your peers in your own town hall to help an applicant who is eager, passionate, thorough, thoughtful. You know, we have come as individuals and as a family to multiple departments, multiple people. We've asked for cooperation and received it multiple times. It's been a wonderful, very positive experience. Everybody has been forthcoming, helpful, supportive, guiding. And so we really felt like we were moving in a very positive direction, including everybody, making sure that we were dotting our i's and crossing our t's. What I find disingenuous, I guess, or disheartening, maybe that's a better word, is so much work and preparation and thought and detail and outreach has already been done to get us here. And Sean is nipping at the bud as a young, eager person wanting to move ahead with life and a career. And we should be embracing and supporting people who have desires, and this is a vocation, and has all the support behind them, strong families, strong values, strong morals. And what I'm hearing tonight is the possibility. And believe me, I've done a ton of advocacy in my community and at the state level with state legislators on multiple issues. I know that if you're going to put this burden back on us, I know how long it takes in municipal government to accomplish anything if we're on our own. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to implore you to please help us facilitate. This is not our problem necessary. I understand there's confusion, but we didn't create it. We're in a situation where you're going to stall us and potentially thwart Sean's opportunities for I'm hearing up to two years as a possibility. I'm just asking you to help us fast forward a direction and a thoughtful plan that we were all working in collaboration with and help us find the right steps to take from here without having to do this on our own to to move this forward in a very productive, positive direction. I I I feel I feel like we came with intent, with purpose, with desire. You know, the bottom line is, I just feel like, you know, this is not a hobby for Sean. It's a calling and a vocation what he's doing and what he wants to do. He's not an experiment. He's proven. He's got a strong reputation and a strong following. He's got strong mentors and a a a strong family, a fiance who works full time. You know, they're hardworking, they're thoughtful, they're deliberate, and they made a ton of sacrifices to be able to live and thrive in your beautiful community. It was thought out from the beginning where they could get a kennel. You can't live everywhere. You can't go to every community. It was very thoughtful when they worked with the existing homeowner to ask about policies and working with the town and cooperation and collaboration. There was thoughtfulness there with the realtor from the very beginning, reaching out to you folks, knowing that, you know, we couldn't ask for a guarantee. But Sean and Elena came to this community with a package. Those dogs are their family. So they need to be able to live there, but he's also asking for something else. So I'm just asking you to not put this back on us when so much work and thought and planning and in cooperation and collaboration with all of you, town clerk, building commissioner, the conservation committee, there is not a department in your building that we have not sought guidance from.
Ms. Castro, thank you very much. I appreciate your comments and take them to heart. I will tell you that you mentioned all the people that you've worked with. There isn't a single abutter who has spoken in favor of this application. Not a single abutter. And and to me, that's that's a significant, that's a major concern to this board member. And I personally do not find the site is inappropriate for this operation. So I'm going to just go out and tell you that I can't support this application. Sorry.
I've I've been thinking about this quite a bit, and I think every board member here knows that I have a great deal of respect for my colleagues on the board. I really do. And Brian and I, we've been going through tough decisions for years together. And here with incredible amount of respect, I I disagree with my colleague on a couple of things. I absolutely agree that when a whole bunch of abutters don't like the idea that it is a concern, especially when you take a look at what's in section 5A 3, which has concern about whether or not the use is permitted, and then section 8A 2F, which is about the findings that determine our votes. So I if it following Brian, since Brian voiced how he viewed things, I think it's only appropriate that I step up. And I I'm I don't I don't like being in tough situations like this, but that's what I signed up for. And I don't like upsetting abutters. But I think the very fact that this section exists in our zoning bylaw indicates that this can be an appropriate use in town. I think in town, we already have riding stable businesses. We already have a kennel in town. So there have been instances where the planning board has granted a special permit. So that's why I conclude that this can be an appropriate use. And I'd be glad to go into more detail, but I don't want to be long winded here.
No, and 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 Ray, that that'll be fine for us as we discuss ourselves once we close the hearing. If there's a meeting of the minds, the conditions should be imposed upon.
Yes.
For me, I I can't I can't support, and I appreciate your position. Any board members wish to weigh in?
When when you want to discuss things, we can, you know, we can discuss those things. And before we would actually vote yea or nay, we would have to have an understanding about what conditions we would impose for that vote. And I also I also agree with the Castros that that I I I think we need to step up and and make a call yea or nay, if not tonight, at our next meeting. I don't think that we should punt this indefinitely.
Any other board members wish to move, put on record tonight, or or we'll wait until our we'll close the public hearing tonight? And I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you wish to say anything, go right ahead.
At this point, Brian.
I'm not ready.
No, not tonight. Thank you.
Okay, then I move to close the public hearing on the 26 Church Street special permit application.
Second.
All those in favor? Brian Murphy, aye.
Ray Cook, aye.
Verdina, aye.
DeBella, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Yep, five, nothing. So we will need to sit and discuss the the potential on a vote and the potential conditions if if the members feel that that is warranted. It will not be at the next meeting. I'm going to move that we see what's our meeting in November look like.
Provided that there aren't further continuations, I think we're looking okay. It will be after town meeting. Those discussions will be done. I I think the only thing that we might have on is an informal meeting.
Mute. I unmuted you, didn't I? Yeah.
Yes, especially with town meeting coming up. We do not want to have anything at the next meeting.
Yeah.
We may want to keep that open for other discussions.
So I think the first of November is.
So which what what is that date? I'm trying to get up on my phone.
Oh, sorry.
I think it's the seventh.
Yes, the seventh.
Okay, I move to continue the hearing on this.
Oh, we just closed the hearing.
Closed.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Never mind. You're absolutely right. So that that's when we will end up discussing this, where our next steps, and you noted that we do have 90 days actually to provide a vote on this.
I've had a note on my calendar that November 7th, 2023 is election day. In the past, that's had an effect on. Uh, in the past, that's had an effect on,
Yeah.
On when we meet. I don't know if that has an effect this time around.
Well, uh,
And you're not, you're not obligated to say when you'll make a decision, although it's certainly, I'm certain, certainly the Castros, I'm sure are anxious to, to know that, but you're suggesting that it's the first meeting in November.
Yeah. Do you know offhand, Sue? Do we, are, are we allowed to have our planning board meeting on the night of election day?
Typically, they're not. Um, and they're either moved ahead a day or.
So it could be the sixth, could be the eighth, and that's something we need to discuss.
Yeah. Um, Brian, I don't know if you know, and I'm just, uh, Mr. McGrath asked if he could speak, so I just wanted to let you know that.
So we've closed the hearing. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. We have the, our next hearing is, uh, well, we're starting about 15 minutes late. Uh, this was continued from September 19th. It's 87 Crane Neck Street, special permit for reduced frontage lot and special permit for a common driveway. I move to open the, uh, hearing for 87 Crane Neck, um, reduced frontage lot and common driveway.
Second.
All those in favor? Brian Murphy.
Ray Cook, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Debbie Alden, aye.
Okay, let's open the hearing. We have some notes. Um, there has, this, uh, the continued hearing, there was a delay of two meetings at the applicant's request. Um, there is some new information available from the applicant, and we will hear this. Um, as a reminder, the planning board will ask questions and then we will take public comment. Um, it's possible we will close the hearing tonight. Um, and we will perhaps discuss the findings criteria on the special permit and, uh, but a vote will be held at a future meeting. Um, so the applicant, uh, William Spalding, and I don't know if he's speaking or the, uh, the engineer for Williams and Spargus.
Uh, good evening. Uh, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. My name is Rich Williams. Um, I'm one of the principals at Williams and Spargus. Our offices are in Middleton, Massachusetts. Um, as you said, we've submitted some additional information, and I'd like to take you through that. If it's possible to share my screen, that would be great.
Oh, yes, please.
Okay. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
All right, so, um, the, the first piece of information or additional piece of information that I'm going to go through is the updated plan. Um, and we addressed some comments that were, um, were brought up at the last meeting. This plan, um, shows, I'm going to zoom up a little bit. Um, this is the, uh, the rear lot, and we've added a, uh, a gravel turnaround area. As discussed at the last meeting, this area is big enough for, um, a ladder truck to pull in, uh, back out and, uh, hit pullout.
Go on, you need to say something. We're going to do that. I'll be with my eye.
Yep, go ahead.
Yep, sorry. I just heard someone else talking. Um, we also flagged, uh, some additional wetlands. There was some concern that these flags, oh, this, this wetland system here was not fully flagged. Um, so we added flags D1A, uh, up to D13A. These flags go along Crane Neck Street and then back, um, into the property, um, and, and to the lot line. This, this area here is, uh, actually, um, a, a piece of the paddock that the, um, that the abutters are using, um, and that's, that's on the property.
Um, wait, before you proceed, Mr. Spargus.
Uh, my name's, uh, Rich Williams. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. Um, I, I see wetland indicators on both sides of the flagging.
Yeah, these, and I apologize. Um, these, these two symbols were, um, because we thought the wetland was out here, uh, they were inadvertently not removed, but the wetland is contained in here.
Okay, can you?
This is the buffer zone.
Yeah, can you just scan up just a little bit? I want to see that property line that's obscured a little bit there. Okay, so the new flagging does extend to the property line at flag D13 dash A, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that, and as you said, the two wetland indicator symbols are in error.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We also, um, amended, there was some discussion about the amount of clearing that was proposed on the, uh, back lot, which is lot two. And, um, it was stated that it was not the intention to, to clear cut the whole property. So what we've done is taken a reasonable distance from the proposed house and the septic area construction and showed an area of clearing. That, that area from the house is roughly 100 feet, and that's a good distance to ensure that trees aren't going to fall in the house or, um, cause a problem. The rest of the area that, um, we had shown as limit of clearing, so between what our revised, um, clearing line and the proposed limit of work, we've labeled as proposed area of forest management. And the intention there is to, there are dead trees in there and, um, uh, trees that are leaning on other trees, and those need to be cleaned up. The intention is to, to do that, but not to, not to clear the area.
Um, thank you. Can, can you zoom in on the backyard, uh, from proposed house? I just want to make sure I understand what I'm seeing. Exactly. Thank you. So, um, that 100 dash line says 100 all over it. That is the limit, uh, that is the buffer zone?
That's the buffer zone from the, the, uh, bordering vegetated wetland.
Thank you. So you're proposing behind the house, uh, to clear beyond that buffer zone?
That's correct. And there is, we have a permit for that from the conservation commission.
Thank you for that clarification, sir.
Are there any questions on this plan? Cause I'm going to move on to the next, the next plan unless there, there are questions.
Well, they may come back. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's okay. We can go back. Just if there's something immediate, I, I'd stick on this plan. There was also, um, a, a fair amount of discussion about the, the effect of the development of this lot on the abutters. And we prepared, uh, this plan and a cross section, which I'll go to next, showing, um, what that looks like from an, from an aerial standpoint. Um, this is the proposed house on lot two. This is the existing dwelling on, uh, the abutters property. The distance between those two is about 950 feet. And, um, you can see that there's a, a fair amount of, of wooded area between those two. This area here, it's a little bit deceiving, is a paddock, and there are some, there's some vegetation in there, but, um, it is, uh, fairly clear, um, in this area. And we prepared a cross section. So you can see, um, this is to scale, um, elevation wise. So uh, this is the proposed house, and, um, this is what we, um, estimate as the, uh, the forested area. There is a wetland that, um, goes through that, um, that 950 feet between the house, uh, the proposed house and the, and the existing neighbor, neighbor's dwelling. Um, and I think there are, there's more vegetation in here that we show, but, um, there's less in the wetland than there is in the wooded area. So that's, that's what this gap is about. Um, and then you get through the wooded area, and there's a, a cleared area, um, that's the horse paddock. And then this is the existing dwelling on the neighbor. And you can see, um, from this information that, um, it would be very hard to see this house, uh, see these two houses, um, from each other.
Thank you, Eric. And it looks to me like you're estimating the tree height in the wooded area is about 50 feet?
Yeah, it, we said 55 feet, I think. Um, and that's, that's, yeah, pretty close to what's out there. I mean, there are some, some taller trees and some shorter trees, obviously, but it's a, it's a pretty good average.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, can you go back just, I, I didn't write down the distance, uh?
Was nine, 950, something like that?
950 between the house and the house.
House to house.
For anybody that, uh, doesn't run around with numbers in your head, that's just short of two tenths of a mile.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We also submitted a list of waivers, um, that would be required, uh, because the, the, uh, the common driveway, uh, section of the zoning says that, um, that the common drive should be constructed, uh, to the same standards as the minor road. And, um, I'm gonna just take you to that cross section, and this is right from the zoning, so it's, it's 90 degrees, so I apologize for that. Um, but these, these are, the, these are the requirements for a minor road. Um, we are not a paved road, um, for our application. The existing driveway that's there is gravel, and we intend to, uh, continue using that as the common drive, um, so we would not have a, a paved driveway. So, um, from that standpoint, we'd be asking for a reduction, um, for the 25, 20-foot wide traveled way to, um, the minimum width that we have is 14 feet. And, um, I will point out that it's 14 feet, but we have substantial, um, width adjacent to that driveway for, um, you, that you can drive on. It's, it's, um, very good material, uh, coarse sands and gravels, and, um, it, um, allows for driving off the edge without, uh, without sinking in. So there is more width than we've got, uh, constructed there.
Question?
Yes.
Would you be providing the subbase as shown?
Well, the subbase is gravel and, and, um, this probably, uh, six or seven feet of gravel underneath that driveway. So yes, uh, but it's the, it's the existing.
Yeah, the existing, the existing conditions are several feet of gravel as a natural deposit there?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Um, and then obviously, uh, because we're not pavement, we're asking for a waiver from, um, the, the thickness of the pavement section because we're, we're going to have gravel. Um, and then the last one is driveway cross slope. And, uh, the driveway, the purpose of the cross slope, as, as you guys know, is to, um, to not have puddling on a paved surface. We've got, um, enough grade and that driveway is in existence and it does not puddle. So we're not, um, we're not worried about the 2%. And it wouldn't make sense to, um, to disturb that, to create the 2% because it's, um, it's functioning as we would expect it to function. And we've had, uh, some substantial, um, rain events lately, and, um, this driveway has held up well. Um, much better compared to other driveways in town. we also submitted, bear with me one second, go back to this, my images here. Oh, boy. We also submitted two other, um, options in terms of what, what would happen if we were not granted the permit for the special, for the, uh, common driveway? And one option would be, uh, to create a subdivision, a two-lot subdivision. Um, and I'll zoom up a little bit on the, on the roadway piece of it. This, this configuration meets the, uh, dimensional standards for, uh, for the lots and for the, um, the size of the road and the roundings. Um, we could build a, a road in there, provide frontage for lot one and lot two. Um, it would require some wetland filling here, but, um, less than, um, when you combine it with the work that's been done back here, less than 5,000 square feet. So we think we could get a permit. Um, the other option is, um, this plan, which is a concept plan that we did showing what it would look like if we created a separate driveway across the wetland, um, for lot one. So this, this shows what the axis would be for lot one. Lot two would go, uh, would enter the property from the current driveway and then, um, and then continue on like it's proposed now, um, across that crossing. And again, this, this fill is, uh, like 1,900 square feet. Um, of course, it's, it's conceptual, uh, but when you combine that with the, uh, work that was done in the back, it's still well below 5,000 square feet. So we feel like we could get a permit for that.
Um, what does, um, what does RCP stand for?
Uh, it's reinforced concrete pipe.
So how is reinforced concrete pipe laid flat? I'm, I'm confused. If it's circular in nature, it's.
Well, flat from end to end.
Okay, all right.
It's, it would just be.
Yeah, I got you. I, I always think, when I see laid flat, I'm thinking of a rectangular cross section that you lay flat, like you lay a two-by-four down flat versus.
Yeah, no, it's flat in the longitudinal direction. Um, and the, the, as you guys know, the, the point of the special permit for, um, for the common drive is to avoid these types of situations where we're filling wetland where we don't need to, we're creating a new curb cut, um, we're, uh, working in a wetland where we don't need to work within a wetland and changing the, the streetscape. Um, and, and I'll just repeat, um, I think what was said many times at the last meeting, that this, this section of common drive is very short. It's, um, from, from where it meets Crane Neck Street to where the, the driveways diverge, um, it's less than 150 feet. So it is, um, it is pretty short. And I think with that, I'll open it up to questions. Um, uh, and I, and I apologize, but, um, uh, Bill Spalding and, um, uh, his representative are, are on tonight. So, um, if there are things that I missed that, uh, that they want to point out, uh, we can allow them to do that as well.
Uh, yes, so Rich, yeah, this is Brian. Um, it, it looks like you eliminated the, there, there was a question about, on, on the common drive with the existing, there was.
Yes, I'm sorry. I failed to point that out, but we, uh, are proposing a split rail fence along that edge. So I know there was a concern that this would end up being a loop. There is no intention for that.
That's correct. Yeah, that's what I mean, the loop, uh, yeah.
Right, so, um, we're proposing a split rail fence, so you can't, you won't be able to drive through there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm just, so the. Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm just, so the alternative without this, I mean, you could have created the loop, but then it would have meant the common driveway portion of the plan would have been roughly three times the length. Is that correct?
Um, you mean if it went up to here?
Yeah, you
Yeah, that would add about another hundred and fifty feet, so but around double, but yeah, we don't, we don't want it to be a loop. We, we want them to be separate.
That's fine, that's fine. And, and the, without the loop, uh, there's no concern about uh fire trucks being able to get in there and turn around and get out?
No, they can pull in here and, and do a three-point turn.
Thank you.
Remember, our, our chief felt he could back out from the, the new house in the back there.
Now he doesn't have to, there's a nice little tree.
That's right.
I mean The chief is not alone in the fire department. There's a lot of skills among the volunteers.
There, there you go, yeah.
Yeah, but if, you know, in snowy conditions and things like that.
Yeah, we don't need to test those extra shoulders or whatever, right?
For me, yeah, it's, it's backing out on a rainy night, that's uh, yeah.
Yeah.
On your house, when your house is on fire, that's the least of your problems.
Yeah. I, I just want to say that I, I appreciate the homework that you've done here. Um, uh, that you specified a limited, more limited tree cutting. You addressed the issue of sight lines uh and impact on the neighbors that way. So I, I appreciate the uh, the extra work you've put into this.
Uh, Rich, did you have any discussion with the CONCOM about your, you know, proposed alternate driveway in, into lot one? I, I, I know they wouldn't want to see it and uh
Yeah, I did not, but I, I suspect the answer would be, um, you can file a permit, we don't want you to do it. Um, but that you'd have, you, you know, you have to go through the process to get a permit.
Brian, if it, if it's appropriate, uh, could I make a couple of comments here?
Oh, and yeah, no, no, that's absolutely, yes.
So uh I've been thinking about this a lot and, and what I've been hung up on is under uh section seventy of the zoning bylaw. Um, where it says that um bum, 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 each lot frontage must also provide the possibility of reasonable practical access. And I think this is, this is where you showed your alternative plans. And so now the question in my mind is, do your alternate plans prove that without the common driveway, each lot frontage would have also provided the possibility of reasonable practical access? And I, I really appreciate hearing from uh, that's in seventy-four, you didn't highlight it, but that to me is what this whole thing has boiled down to there on the common driveway special permit. I mean, I, I'd love to hear what my colleagues have to say on the matter. You've, you've gone a long way in presenting these alternate possibilities. So with that wetland, so I'm asking my, my colleagues here, would, would uh, would that wetland crossing constitute reasonable practical access? Or would the uh, the, the subdivision with the additional of the drive and the turnaround, is that, would that be, could that be considered reasonable practical access?
Well, the subdivision provides frontage, there's no common driveway in question anymore. You just build that and then make your own driveways wherever you want to. It would not also be a common driveway application were a subdivision being applied for.
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
That is correct, and that, that also goes for um for this plan, we wouldn't be applying for a common driveway, it would be two separate driveways.
Yeah, but this, but this, 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 again, this gets a, is this plan, in particular this plan, uh considering what Ann just said, is could, is that, can we interpret that as reasonable practical access?
But as a wetland crossing, but we have, there are wetland crossings onto property in town. Right, there's no
It would be, it would be similar to what was done in the back.
You know, if you look at, Ray, if you go back to the old A and R handbook, you know, there's not a state highway guardrail. There's not a forty-foot cliff, you know, I, I think, I think it does.
Okay, I appreciate that, Ann. I'm a little gun shy because of our, our, you know, what happened over on Middle Street with wetland crossings.
Yeah, no, no, fair, fair point, but I, I think Ann has hit on the head, but you know, standing alone, yeah, it's it, it would be a process to go through the hearings with the CONCOM, but they would let him do it. And uh
Okay.
And they're gonna defer and say, well, the better access is with the common driveway.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to actually step up uh and kind of help Mr. Williams there. It seemed like he was, he was reaching for the language. I think the language is in seventy-one. And that's that uh, the, you know, where the common driveway provides a benefit. Um, and the phrase that I think he wanted to say was a protection of significant natural features. That the common driveway would protect the, the wetlands.
Yes, I, I agree. I, I was going, because this, there are a handful of criteria in there and we meet almost all of them.
Right, I just wanted to point out, because this is, this is a public meeting, I wanted to point out that that's, that's the phrase that, that I think uh matters here.
Right, I'll, I'll read it out loud for, for you guys. Said benefit of purpose may include reduction in the number of curb openings or driveways onto major streets or at unsafe, unsuitable locations. I would say that um this isn't unsafe or unsuitable, but that it is, um, it's a, an additional curb cut onto a major street. Protection of stone walls, protection of significant natural features, which is the wetland itself. Pres- preservation of historic landscapes, which that roadside has been there for a long time. Um, and other safety and environmental concerns, which um we have the wetland itself and um protecting that is important, uh certainly to the, to the town of West Newbury.
Right. Thank you, Brian. I'm, I'm, I'm done with my comments on the common driveway.
Yep, and?
Yep, um, just to, you know, we haven't seen any of these for a while. Things have been quiet during the pandemic. But this used to be the kind of thing that we would see quite happily and we would say, this is what, you know, where a common driveway really comes into its own. It's only serving to a single-family house. It keeps the existing one curb cut. It doesn't mess with the wetlands. It does all those things. So I think this is kind of a textbook uh good example of an appropriate use myself.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other comments, Tim, Deb?
I agree with Ann.
Yeah, I just had a question, um, Brian, um revisiting uh whether or not the stormwater bylaw applied here. I, I'm looking through the documents previously. I thought there was some application filed.
It, it does apply. I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it does apply and we have, um, we have submitted an application to the Board of Health. It's a um, the lesser of the tier one and the tier two, and I forget, uh, I think it's tier one. Um, which is less than four acres of disturbance. Uh, we've applied, gone to a meeting, but they have um just put off on closing that hearing uh until we get through this process.
Okay, yeah, they are related. The reason I bring it up, I think they are related because of the safety and environmental, you know, considerations that we take into account here. So it's good to hear that that process also applies. Um, could you confirm that maximum grade on the road, if you have that?
On the common driveway?
Yeah.
Um, I think I'm, I'm gonna go to What's that?
It, it's pretty flat.
It is flat. Uh, I, I can, I can answer that question pretty, uh, pretty quickly, though. The steepest part uh of the common driveway is right here and it's um two feet and twenty-seven, so it's about uh seven percent, but I'll do the math out for you.
Seven point four.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Yeah.
It's good to have an engineer on the, on the call here.
You, you've actually got a steeper slope up at uh, at the house, at the proposed house.
Yeah, it's steeper.
Right, that's what I was wondering about really was the, you know, the slope, you know, going all the way up, uh, not necessarily just the common
By my calibrated eye, that's ten percent.
Yeah.
But not part of our current discussion, actually.
It, it is not, Ann. I, I will point out that, and I, I know where you're going with this there. Um, although this, this is steep, the soils here are very good. Um, it, it, they don't have a lot of fines in them and um we don't expect to have transport of uh of sediment like, like is happening on the other part of the town. And the watershed here is very small, so you're only gonna get runoff from the middle. Um, actually, the house goes into this infiltration area, so um we've got a driveway that's collected in here. So really, all you're gonna have is this little area that, that is gonna uh be taking runoff down the driveway. So very little water is gonna be coming off that uh, off that hill.
Well, my, my concern when you get into, to, you know, five to ten percent or higher is, is uh, you know, car, cars sliding on a, on an icy surface, but um, you know, most of this slope would be on gravel. Yeah, I, I, that, that, and I, and just to reiterate, we're, we're talking simultaneously, we're considering two special permit applications.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have to, we have to meet the findings on both.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's more a matter of curiosity with the house. We, we, we don't have purview on the house.
How did I do with my calibrated eye? Did I get the ten percent? What it, what it
No, it's seven again.
Ah, damn it, okay.
So maximum seven, but it's pretty flat at the house and it's very flat after you get through this little stretch here.
Well, that's where the, that's where the kids can race the bikes down the hill.
Right.
Well, I think, no, you, you've, you've done well with these, uh, these adjustments, I, I guess I'll call them that. Uh, uh, and uh, as some of which we request and some of which you have done anyway. Tim, did you have something else? I'm sorry.
No, no, those are, yeah, and I do, I do think actually with the reduced frontage application too, I do think that the environmental and safety considerations and the benefits of the town and that do come into account. So uh, that's why I was asking about um, you know, the potential for runoff and the si- the situation with the grade of the road. But I'm all set, thank you.
All right. So um we'll hear if there's any other, there must be some other public comments that we can entertain at, at this time.
Do you want me to leave my screen up for this?
Uh, no, take it down for now and let's, let's see if we need to, we'll call upon you to put it back up, okay? It's always easier for me to see who's waving their arms around or whatnot. Uh, does anyone wish to comment on what we have seen tonight? See, oh, there's Attorney DeShane. Hello, sir, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Douglas DeShane with Finrin and Nicholson. Um, I actually represent the neighbors, uh, Chris and Kelly Dukowski that live at eighty-one Crane Neck Street. And I, I do have some comments um to provide to the board. Uh, first of all, I'd like to just quickly address the proposed um conventional subdivision road that was proposed and presented by the applicant as a, a, you know, we could do this um as an alternative. Um, and it did show a significant wetland filling. And although the proposed filling on that wet, on that se- definitive subdivision um in conjunction with the previous filling that was allowed out back is less than five thousand dollars, five thousand square feet. I can assure you that um if not your conservation commission, the DEP will surely look very differently at that proposed wetlands filling. Um, your client has, or the, the applicant has access uh to their developable portion of the lot over the existing driveway. Um, and in fact, has received a, an, another crossing to get to the back of the lot under the guise of a barn being constructed back there. Um, DEP frowns on providing extra filling in order that a person can get extra lots out of their property. The law says that as long as you have practical access to your lot, they do not have to allow you additional filling. So I would suggest that that's, at least conventional subdivision is, is not a guarantee by any stretch of the imagination. Um, and quite frankly, if it was that easy to do, uh, why wouldn't the applicant just get the uh, do that subdivision? And all these other questions and issues would go away. But with respect to their permits, uh, the specific permit for the reduction in lot frontage, um, it is true that you consider wetlands cross, that you, when you're looking at practical access, there are two reasons that you're looking at that today. One is under the um special permit for the reduced frontage. In order to qualify for that reduced frontage, they have to show that they have practical frontage for both lots. And as you'll recall at the last hearing, I questioned whether there was any practical frontage on lot two, uh, be, uh, excuse me, lot one, because the wetland went all the way across. There was no break in the wetland um along that frontage, so it certainly didn't qualify for any A and R endorsement for lot one, not to mention the reduced frontage on lot two. Um, my clients have used that property um as a paddock between them and the prior owner for over thirty years. Um, they have experienced that as being wet. And so now we have a new flagging that shows that corner is not wet. And I went out and checked the flags. The flags are placed along, directly along the uh cut vegetation, which implies to me that the, that wetland line was defined by vegetation and not by soil borings. If you drew a, put a soil, we put a soil boring into that area, it is wetland soils, we have no questions. So I guess I would ask, has the conservation commission certified that that new wetland or that new upland that has been identified along Crane Neck Road is in fact upland? Because without it, there is no practical access for purposes of an A and R plan for lot one at all. I really think you need to find out if that line is in fact been certified by your conservation commission because it is so critical that you're considering it upland. The other reason we look at practical access is with respect to your common driveway bylaw. I don't disagree that the use of a common driveway here may in fact meet section seventy-one in terms of um, you know, it, it, it provides a public benefit and protection of wetlands. I can't disagree with that because in most cases, uh, common driveway can achieve that. However, before you get to that question, they have to meet the standard of a common driveway special permit. And one of those is showing practical, reasonable access along the frontage of both lots. In this case, they've shown a wetlands crossing right from the road. They haven't even shown where there's any, you know, dry upland area to pull off the road, which is that first analysis, the purposes of an A and R plan. But then now they're saying this wetlands crossing is a practical and reasonable crossing. And yes, conservation commissions do allow pro- crossings when they are needed and there's no other way to get to your land. Again, as I've stated earlier, the conservation commission has already granted a crossing on this property. They have access to all purposes of their, of, of their lot. Um, at least according to what DEP will say. And now they're saying that they could get another driveway for this second lot as a practical means. I, again, I respectfully disagree that there's no way the conservation commission would approve that second driveway when they already have access to their property without going through wetlands. DEP would not allow it. So they have not met the standard of showing reasonable practical access from both lots uh from the road to the lots. It's just not there. So unless they can show that, um, you don't even get to the question of whether this would have a public benefit. They haven't met the standards. Additionally, your common driveway uh special permit says, a common driveway shall meet, shall meet the dimensional and construction standards of the town of Westbury, West Newbury. the dimensional and construction standards of the town of Westbury, what, New, West Newbury minor roadway standards. There, I don't see anything in the bylaw that allows a waiver from that requirement. I would suggest they would need a, a, a variance from that requirement because it says shall meet. Pretty simple, and I think there's a reason for that. If we're now going to allow common driveways, we need to make sure those driveways are safe, provide for reasonable emergency access. And so there was a standard set of how these should be built, it's very clear. I see nothing in your bylaw that allows for a waiver for that standard in providing a common driveway special permit. So I think they failed in two, in two requirements in order to obtain the uh, special dr- uh, permit for the common driveway, one, they have not shown that they have reasonable access to both lots. A, a wetland crossing is never a guarantee, and in this particular case, I just don't see where the commission would ever, and certainly DEP would not allow it. And secondly, they need to build this thing to a common driveway standard as defined in your bylaw, unless they receive a variance to do otherwise. The, the, the last comment I have, um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board is, um, again, with respect to the reduced frontage lot, they have to show practical frontage for both lots. And again, that, that, that reflagging of the wetland, I don't think creates that until it's certified that the conservation commission agrees with that line. Because if you go out, you'll see that the flags were just hung in a direct line where the vegetation has been cut. And they did not, as, as far as I could see, investigate the soils in that paddock area. I think if they did, it will show wetland all the way across the frontage. They have not met their standards of required standards. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your comments, uh, appreciate that. Um, are there other comments from anyone about this particular application?
Actually, um, when it comes to reasonable practical access across a wetland, um, I found a, uh, a case and, and it comes back to our case, Baker versus the town of West Newbury. And, um, it says, the SJC determined the plaintiffs were entitled to endorsement of their plan because there is no question that the frontage provides adequate vehi- vehicular access to the lot, the presence of wetlands on the lots does not raise a question of access from the public way.
Thank you. Um, if there's no other further comments, I think our next, uh, step would be to close the public hearing. And, uh, then at some point in the, in the future, we will, uh, deliberate on this application. Are there any other comments here tonight?
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Jeff Roloff speaking, attorney for the applicant.
Yes.
And just quickly, I wanted to respond, um, to two comments that Attorney DeShane's made. First, with respect to the, the reasonable practical access, uh, language from section seventy-four, I just wanted to highlight, um, the term that's been avoided there, although it was mentioned earlier, but the standard is actually the possibility of reasonable practical access, so I don't think the burden's on us to show that there's going to be a, a guaranteed approval uh, of what we've depicted as the alternative access route, um, to the common drive. And then with respect to the waiver question, um, you know, this board has granted waivers of the minor roadway standards for other common driveways in previous decisions. Its authority to do that comes from, um, the subdivision rules and regulations, which is where those standards are set forth. So in applying those standards, even in the subdivision context, you have the authority to waive the standards in appropriate circumstances. That waiver authority extends to your, uh, review and application of the same standards in the common driveway setting. Thank you.
No, thank you very much for your comment, appreciate that. Any other comments? Um, hearing none, I move to close the public hearing for the, uh, eighty-seven Crane Neck for the common driveway and the reduced frontage law applications before us.
Second?
Second.
Second, okay, thank you, Ray. All those in favor, Brian Murphy. Tim and five, five zero to close the hearing. Okay, thank you, everyone, and Sue, just, Sue, can I confirm with you? Again, I believe from the last hearing, uh, we went, we render this within ninety days, correct?
Yes.
Um, and ho- hopefully sooner, uh, but we do not have to set a date tonight, as you mentioned. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all, appreciate your, your thoughtful comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Take, take care.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, good lord, it's nine twelve, wow. Uh, did I do with my agenda here?
Accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Accessory dwelling, yes, thank you. Um, Sue, we wanted to talk about a couple things, the question of the opinion of, uh, I don't know if you've got a reading on the fifty percent versus the two thirds.
I did, yes, so, um, we asked town council, so the question came up, um, at the select board and finance committee meeting where they were um, going over the warrant articles and voting to approve, the good news is they approved, um, both select board and FinCom approved, um, the warrant articles, these as, and recommended approval of both of these um, as submitted. Um, but the question did come up about the vote, whether it would be a ma- uh, majority, a simple majority or a two thirds vote. The town council has opined that because it has language for a special permit for a larger accessory dwelling unit or an additional curb cut, that it will require a two thirds vote. Her recommendation is if we wanted a simple majority, that we would produce two articles. Um, the first without the special permit language that could pass as a fifty percent or a simple majority, and then the second, a special permit language which would need to pass as a two thirds vote. Um, the select board, I guess felt confidence that it might pass with a two thirds vote, so just recommended putting the whole thing in, but I think maybe you want to discuss or recommend.
Sure, I'm open for discussion.
I have a question. So town council actually suggested that we have a separate warrant article just with the special permit provisions? I mean, that seems like, I don't know the right term, but it's kind of like willful evasion, it's odd piece of legal advice and.
But don't, but don't quote Anne, yeah.
Well, no, I, I, I think, you know, you're providing two alternatives. It would be awkward. You're not making, just, you just approved the first one by a simple majority, and I say, okay. By the way, if we want to do this one, this would require a two thirds vote, but it gives them more versatility. Then there'd be a discussion in the second vote, and the second vote would then obviate the first, right?
So I think what, what she says is it continues to be my opinion that if the proposal includes provision that allows by special permit for an ADU that is larger that is then contemplated by the definition in GL chapter forty-eight, section one A or otherwise different from the definition, then the one proposal should be a separate warrant article that will require a two thirds vote. So she is saying that you put in, I think what she's saying is the entire, the entirety with the exception of the special permit, and then you would add the special permit language by a, by a two thirds vote.
Gotcha, so first we would approve it, and if it got approved, we'd come up with a second warrant article to alter the language that we just approved.
Yes, to add the language, yes, weird to me.
I can, I can kind of see the logic there, Anne. Especially, you know, I mean, no, I'm not even going to say that joke, but I can see the logic.
I'm not sure. I mean, there's, there's certainly an option there, but I think it's confusing to people about what's going on. Yeah. And what's, it's gonna cause, I think, undue attention to this s- special permit provision.
On the other hand, y- yes, and, yeah, I, I put it this way, politically speaking, at town meeting, I actually think you're more likely to pass the ADU if people understand that there's the possibility of this exception.
I, I agree, I think people will like.
That would, that would be better, yeah.
I, I think they'll appreciate that we were thoughtful, at least I hope they appreciate it. Um, in, in, including a review. You know, some poor guy comes up, he says he's got a thousand square feet, what, what's he do?
Exactly.
So I, I, my inclination is the, go for the two thirds, if it fails in the spring, we evaluate whatever the hell we, we're doing.
And I, I, I agree.
Of course, the timing in the spring isn't good because we have that other big thing, uh, with them, the, uh, MBTA.
Oh, for sure, that ain't no big deal?
That'll make this look like a walk in the park.
Yeah, yeah.
With how many yards?
Are we agreed on the two thirds, I, it sounds like, right, yeah.
Yeah.
You can relay that, Sue?
I certainly will.
Okay, um, and so there's two other items on ADUs, um, the first, I, the Sue brought to my attention, I think, uh, whether I was confused, which is certainly easy to understand, on we had a lot of discussion about two families, uh, two family house and whether an ADU would be permitted. And then, um, and I thought we came to the idea that only, you can only have one ADU there. Um, is it, it, did, did that assumption correct, or was I, you know, out to lunch?
No, that's, that's what we said, and, and, you know, it would be first come, first served, and, and then we, I also remember saying, you know, we're not trying to hit perfection here, we're trying to get something in place and that could be tweaked in the future.
I, and I, that's, I, that's what I remembered was your, your comment about first come, first served, that's what triggered my memory.
As written, it's not, that is not how it is written though, currently. Only applies to a single family. My recollection is that on further discussion that we agreed that it really wasn't fair to be first come, first serve and that it, um, with two families, with a two family are living very close together, so it would be appropriate for, um, you know, if anything, for a special permit or something, but as written, it was only a single family.
Gotcha.
And I think the consistency there, which seems like something Ray would have said at the time, he must have forgotten, is that since we allow two families by right, now a single family with an ADU is no more, in fact, less burdensome than the two families, so, you know, we're not taking undue advantage of.
A damn good point you make, Anne.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I'm not suggesting we're changing anything, but I just wanted to clarify, so, yeah. It's, you're, you're, you're correct, Sue.
You remember, yeah, we remember that.
Yeah, all right, and, and the last is, um, Sue had received and sent on a comment from a resident in town, comment, there's a several page letter, um, and whatnot, from a, uh, Diane Teed. And I didn't know if anyone had, had, uh, if you'd looked at it, wanted to talk about it, or if Sue wanted to discuss, if we wanted to respond to it. Um, you know, we are, we often don't, um, unless it's a public, public hearing, this person did not attend the public hearing. And, uh, the, this has been voted on by the select board and the FinCom, so I'm not, I'm not sure what, what we should do, and I wanted to throw it out to the floor, to the board.
I think we, we owe it to him to discuss it. Or at least recognize the letter that way.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking for it, I missed it, what, uh, was that, which, which, was that in a nine twenty-eight email when?
It was in the midst of the package, Ray.
Got it, I got it, I got it.
It was buried in there, I mean, that's part, part of the problem with the volume of the stuff, yeah.
One of the questions had to do with the fifty percent versus two thirds vote, so I think we've put that to.
Yeah, yeah. Did we want to, uh, put the letter up, Sue?
I, I can do that.
With your, do you have it with your comments, or?
Um, I don't have it with my co- I can get it with my comments, yeah.
I, I've got the letter.
Those are only my comments.
I'd like to see Sue's comments, she's.
Yeah, they, I, I, I had seen them and I thought they were spot on and, uh, but we, we agreed that the board should discuss.
Right, okay, let me find them. And I will note, Mrs., um, Ms. Teed is on the line, so, or on the meeting.
Uh, yes.
Sorry, this is taking me just a minute.
Okay. Hey, I make a que- uh, interject something here, this is Diane Teed speaking.
Yes, please.
I realize it's late, I realize you've reviewed a lot of information. Uh, when someone commented that I didn't attend the meeting, so therefore this may not be considered or responded to, et cetera, I'm curious about what meeting that was. Because I've attained, uh, attempt, uh, attended many, if not all of the Zoom meetings relative to this.
There, there was a public hearing on.
Excuse me?
There was a public hearing on accessory dwelling units.
I, I believe I did attend that.
Okay.
I'm quite sure I did.
Okay, that's, that's fine, we didn't hear any comments, yes.
But be that as it may, um, I'd like to suggest that if possible, if you could answer, I've shortened it to four questions and then just some comments I'd like to make, and I think I can, we can cover this in two or three minutes. Is that acceptable?
Well, are your questions, we have Sue's up on the screen. Uh, your, your, your items, are they, can you tell us which ones they mirror that you are concerned about?
True that the, okay. So ADUs are going to be permitted by right for every single family residence in the town of West Newbury?
If, if the town approves the, the bylaw.
Yes.
Okay. I, uh, that was one, sorry. I'd like to know what the cited references, reference is for the mass law, and I've gone back and looked myself, and I understand that, but I think it's very helpful to the voters in West Newbury to know what the sites are that this is based on in mass general law, so that they can look at it and not have to, uh, work quite so hard. So I think the state should be listed.
I, I, I think it's appropriate for us to have an information, either sheet or something up on the website. Um, so I agree with you on that, but it wouldn't be something that you'd put specifically in the bylaw, I don't think.
Well, I guess my clarification should be that in the warrant that the voters are reading and looking at and voting on, that that reference be included there?
No, no, um, we, we, we're going to, uh, one of the things we're going to talk about, um, Sue suggested that we have an information sheet as a handout that might be helpful for people with this.
That's one of the things I proposed also.
But I agree, Brian, with a previous comment that I'd like this, I think it would be helpful to have it on the website sooner. It's an awful lot to take in when you're arriving at town meeting, there's a lot of. It's an awful lot to take in when you're arriving at town meeting. There's a lot of uproar going on. No one can absorb all that information so quickly.
Yeah, and also an advantage of having an out of town website is it's just, you can just click the link. As opposed to a piece of paper where you have to kind of dig around.
Right. That will be helpful for the voters.
Right, exactly.
Another question that I'm not sure, based on reading all the minutes or attending the meetings, that it's been resolved. Is the question of. The standalone units potentially, or the primary homeowners rental of their property for six months. Could any, either of these be put on Airbnb or Verbo or et cetera type sites? And there was some discussion at the most recent meeting. That there may be a conflict or a clarification needed on short term rental use as it currently exists. I just, you know, at some point it would, I think that's a very important point for voters to know. The importance to that.
Um, that is under the auspices of the, the select board and the town bylaws. They have outlawed being Airbnb VRBO rentals at this time. Um, by dropping the bylaw that allows it, whether they will. Redraft that, uh, I could not tell you.
I would also point out, uh, you know, lots of people are concerned, uh, by, uh, by that, but. It, as, as Brian says, it, it, I don't think it should be part of this. ADU bylaw, because it's a separate issue that applies to. All the places in town. So, uh, so by keeping it out of this bylaw, I think in the end you keep the laws a lot cleaner. You go to one place to find out about whether or not. You know, Airbnb is allowed. And it's not scattered and there's no conflict in the different bylaws. So.
I guess my question would relate back to the original one. If we are basing this bylaw on mass use laws. With the only exception being. Uh, in, uh. I want to make sure I get it right. The exception number five, which was. Intensity of use. Then if they're allowed under mass law, would that not carry over to the bylaw you have? No, or that you're proposing?
No.
No, it would not?
Town, town, town bylaws. Um, are you talking about Airbnb's?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the town bylaws, uh, would, would deal with that.
Okay, so it would not be carried over based on the bylaw being based on mass law. Just want to be clear, based on something I saw. Okay, um.
Just before we leave that point, you know, this is something that has come up numerous times and, um. I agree entirely that shouldn't be in the bylaw, this bylaw, but. Um, this may be something we want to address in that document, you know, that question and answer document.
Oh, absolutely.
Good, good point. Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, uh, uh, Ms. Teed, I, I. So the mass Massachusetts law could allow Airbnbs. But then the town of West Newbury would have control over the specifics within this town. And that would apply to, uh, buildings in this town, whether or not it was an ADU. So we don't, so that's, I think, the point.
And it would be a town bylaw if the select board chose to propose one, not a zoning bylaw.
That's right.
I just, my last comment is that I'm cutting a lot of this out. I think I expressed myself pretty clearly. I do think for the vast majority of people in this town. That space between neighbors matters. It was evident in your own census. And I'd just like you to keep that in mind. And when we say we're going to tweak this later. I have some misgivings about that because reading something, voting on something, and then it being tweaked later. That doesn't give me a lot of confidence relative to what the end result might be for all the citizens in town.
Let me, let me.
Audible what you want to achieve, but I think applying this to every single family residence is a mistake.
I've got, I've got a couple of comments there. Uh, one, when I said tweaking. I think I left the wrong impression. If, if in the future we found that this ADU bylaw was falling short of expectations or. Uh, providing an unintended consequence that needed to be. Addressed. Then we would come before the town again for another full town meeting vote. To change the, the bylaw. So nothing is going to happen behind anybody's back.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
Good, good.
But I've heard, I've heard that come up at prior. Uh, as the meetings also, quite frankly, that it isn't necessarily set in stone. That revisions could be made and. The more defined it is, I think it's more fair to the voters.
Good.
Well, well, yeah, but, but, uh, ma'am, the. As Ray said, if there is a change in the future, it will go before town meeting. We've made changes in other zoning bylaws as a result of. Um, projects that we've seen or, or that realize the language is incorrect or what, whatnot. So. But it would always go to town meeting. Yeah, there's, there's, there's a, there's a check and balance.
And the, the other point that I, I wanted to make was that, you know, I, I'm really fond of town meeting form of government. And so, uh, you know, in town meeting, when this comes up. You'd be, I think you'd be doing everybody a service by standing up or, or having somebody stand up. With the points you're making here and make sure that, that everybody in town is aware of your concerns before the vote is made. We don't. We propose bylaws. Um, that we think makes sense and are good for the town, but it's up to the town to decide. Whether or not to adopt the, the bylaw. So. I think, I appreciate the fact that you took time to write this so carefully and that you've got, you've got valid points here that are worth discussion at town meeting. And ahead of town meeting too, you know, and in the public forum. Uh, which exists in a bunch of different ways. So I, I appreciate your points of view. I, I, I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of valid points here. I. I, I think we've got it right. But, uh, just because I think we got it right, doesn't mean the town thinks we got it right. So.
I appreciate your time. One last request is. It, okay, if Sue sends me. Her responses that she's made, because I haven't had time to read them. And I don't want to take up everybody's time for that.
Of course, I assume she was going to send them to you.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I had no problem with them. I just wanted the other board members to, you know. Sue, maybe you could just send them to the board members. If anybody has a concern, just get back to Sue.
Yes, I would appreciate that. I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, I, I think you'll find they're, they're fine, uh, and, and probably bring some clarity for you.
And that, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you all very much.
Thanks very much. Appreciate your input.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, we're moving along. Fall town meeting board report. Short and sweet.
Yeah, so we had, they had, originally they had thought you could do an update on the MBTA's. MBTA one, and then I think you correctly said, you know, maybe.
No.
The best of things is just to kind of say where you are in the process. But, um, I just think if you're going to make a report, we probably should decide what's in it. And I'm happy to draft something up. Or. Or have someone else to draft, draft something up or, or to decide not to do something, but. Just thought we, maybe we'd get a final answer from you on what you'd like to do.
Do you think you could draft something that we could see before our next meeting and kind of?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a, it's a three, it's a three minute, right?
Well, I, I think it should be like a paragraph or two, very quick.
Exactly.
High level. Thank you very much. That's it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe just generally what your focus is on and. And where you are in the process, couple processes.
Yeah, it shouldn't cover projects. I mean, we've never talked about. You know, hearings and things like that.
Right. So would you want it to include where you are in the process of the MBTA? Initiative?
Probably.
I think we should. I think we should. And, and maybe just say, you know, this is lining up with other housing initiatives in, in town. And, uh. It's important for everyone to pay attention over the next few months.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I, I think just, you know, like a, a one. A, a short introductory paragraph. Um, that explains. What this law is that's being imposed on us and why it's important that we address it. Just to set the background and then state, here's where we are. And yeah, I sure as hell wouldn't, uh, go into any kind of details or sketch plans or building types or anything like that.
Yeah. And sorry to just back up, but we had, you had talked about, um. An answer or frequently asked questions or a fact sheet about ADUs. Do you want me to draft something? Um, for your consideration for the next meeting? I mean, there's lots of them out there from different communities, from AARP, from. And I'm happy to, to not reinvent the wheel, but kind of take the pertinent stuff and. Whatever responds to what's going on here and.
No more than a one page and then two thirds of a page that people can read quickly.
I think sometimes it's just easier to read than the format of a, a zoning bylaw, just simple.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
And having all those, those links to the, yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Yes, because there.
You could even, you could even, uh, uh. I don't know what you guys think about it, but I would say. I would, I suggest maybe we include links to other towns in the area in Massachusetts that have ADUs. And so like, if you want to see Newbury Port's ADU, it's here. If you want to see. You know, so, so people, if they want to really dig into it, they can compare. And even if they don't want to dig into it, they can see that. This isn't something crappy that we're doing just us.
Yeah.
Certainly a link to, to the planning board page of our own town where we have all our captain verse.
Right.
Yeah, I think that, uh, it's probably going to be important to address some of the things that. Diane Teed brought up, you know, in the letter, because it's, these are kind of common questions about who's going to enforce it and, you know, how's it going to be enforced and. Um, you know, what standards are there, you know, and just giving people assurance that the dimensional requirements. Still apply and where the, where the 900 square feet came from and, you know, kind of.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you're new to this, you picture like. Everybody building an ADU in their backyard all around town, and that's kind of a scary idea, you know?
I've got people invoking triple deckers already, so there you go.
Yeah, I know, you know. Okay.
Be some unique architecture, Anne.
It would be.
All right, uh, Sue, your planner's report.
Oh. Remember? Yeah, I think it was, I think it was a bit brief this week, but I think a few things have happened to. So let me just pull that, pull that up and so I can remember what I said.
Well, the, the hour is late. We'll, we'll try to just, we don't have much left to do here.
Yeah, unless you have, unless you have any other questions on, oh, you do have your minutes, but let me just.
No, I'm going to suggest we just, you guys will do them at the next meeting.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let me just.
Move it to larger. Thank you.
Um, I don't really need to update you on the Housing Opportunities Initiative, but I will tell you that I. Um, have had some conversations with Dodson and Flinker and we've sketched out. The next steps between now and, um, town meeting. And I'm going to be putting that up on the web and be sharing that with you. November 7th, um, they'd like to present the concept plans and the draft zoning to you. Um, and then on the, um, the 15th is, November 15th is when. Um, the select board would like to do the forum, but they're doing two forums. And they'd like the MBTA one to stand alone because they think it will overtake anything else. If they try to put more, more together. So they're going, they're going to, they're going to, we're on, we're on our own again on that one. So it won't be tied with other projects. So, um.
Sorry, the 15th is.
Of November.
Of, of, for MBTA stuff or for the non?
For the MBTA stuff. And I think they're going to do the non-MBTA stuff on the 7th. So the non-MBTA, the ones they're going to focus on is the Route 113 corridor work. Um, and the new grant they got for the River Road, um, the resiliency work they're going to do.
So if they do, did you say on the 7th? Because that's our meeting night. That would mean none of us could attend. That would be.
I know, that's, maybe I've gotten, oh, you know what? Maybe I've gotten the date wrong. I think the date's the night.
And the whole election thing too, yeah?
I think it's the night. I'm sorry. I think I might have it down here. No, I don't. That came in afterwards.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, we've already covered the, what the FinCon and Select Board. Oh, so the housing production plan. Um, the regional sub-meeting is scheduled for October 12th. I've started the outreach for that. You should have gotten a notice.
Yes.
Sent out today and you might get it through other different avenues. And I will post it on there, our calendar, um, even though it's not a required posting, but I want people to have access to it. So.
And that, that is, uh, that's not just for West Newbury. That's a, that's a very general meeting.
Right. So it's, what they've done is because, um, MVPC is doing it for the region. There's, I don't know how many different. So they've grouped like. Liked communities. So it'll be us and Rowley and, uh, Newbury and Merrimack. Um, and they'll all be there for the beginning, like they'll do a broad overview and then they'll do breakout rooms for each, um, each community. And then they'll come back together. So, yep, so that will be, um, virtual. So. Um. So we've covered the land management. The improvement study, nothing really new has gone on there. We're still reviewing that. And then we'll get it out. Evergreen Farm Ash Street is underway. Um. This is the one on the River Road Climate Change Resiliency is the, um. $150,000. Dollar grant that we just received to, to, to look at River Road and its environs and to see. What its future might be.
May I just add that I went on the boat ride tonight?
Oh, yes.
That looked at the river bank and, uh, there's a lot of leaning trees, pretty much the whole. Length of town. I've never seen the river so high this time of year. It, it goes right up into the trees now and. Uh, the low section of River Road is, is very much at risk. So.
Concrete blocks.
Oh, that's attractive. It was a beautiful night for a boat trip.
Oh, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I gave up my seat because I was afraid if anything happened, you'd be left in the lurch. I'm like, oh, I can't see that.
I figured it would be too late, so I didn't sign up.
I was a little late, but.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad I wasn't. I'm glad I didn't go.
All right. Good job, Sue. Thank you.
One question?
Yes.
On, on the 12th, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission Future of Housing. There seems to be an, a Zoom event. Is, is anybody else planning to attend that? Is that something?
Yeah, that's the housing production plan one.
Yep.
There it is. Okay.
I can't, I can't attend.
I am doubtful, but I don't know yet.
Okay, I, I'm going to try to attend that.
Great. Deb, I'm hoping that, um. Um, that the Affordable Housing Trust members might attend as well. So I've sent it out to them as well.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay. Um, I'm going to suggest we put the minutes off and you folks can deal with them on October 17th. Um, if there's. Any. any local correspondence, I don't, we don't want any other towns. I don't want to deal with it tonight.
No other local.
Nothing, okay. Any administrative details?
No, but do, is there anything, I mean, obviously I'm going to continue to work with the the town clerk's office and try to kind of figure out what language needs to be changed around kennels. Is there anything else that you feel is needed in terms of town council advice or anything on any of this in advance of your?
I, I, I don't think we should be the one pushing town bylaw changes. That's my opinion.
Yeah.
But you can certainly suggest that they should take a good look at this and perhaps get the animal control officer involved to help them out. Because it struck me that she's a pretty savvy lady. My discussions with her. That's the only, I, I just wouldn't spend a lot of time trying to tweak their bylaws.
Right. No, I think, but it kind of put us in a put people in a spot when, when I wasn't just, wasn't agreeing with the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But the, the Select Board should put it on their, their, a list of to do.
I'm sure they are.
Somewhere on that list. And I am out on the 17th, so Deb, if you're around, I think you're running the meeting. And if you're, you're not in, someone else will have to.
Well, I'm, I'm here. I hesitate to say I can do much, but do we have open hearings that we're going to be hearing that night, Sue?
No.
No.
No, nothing that I'm aware of. I think you might have a preliminary hearing with John Sarkis.
Okay.
Is that still on board for that, Sue, or not?
Whoops, I'll have to double check when that, when that meeting was. I think we did give him a date, didn't we? Yeah, I'll have to double check. Oh, then it probably is.
Yeah.
I'll look it up.
That's an informal discussion of a proposal.
Right.
All right.
Ash Street.
On Ash Street. I'd like to sit down with, with Sue then just to go over that.
Yep. And we have a town meeting afterwards. I'm expecting to be back in time to attend that. I hope every other people will attend as well.
I will not be for town meeting.
Okay. And Sue, I, I'll, you know, I'll be away that week, but maybe you can make sure that we have whatever we need for the language and the warrant language, et cetera.
Yes.
That's usually done through the town clerk's office and whatnot.
And does, does some, does, I would assume maybe someone from the, does someone from the board move the article?
Yes.
And do you know who wants to do that?
Well, it's often the chair unless the chair decides, or the chair has a sniffles or something, who knows? I may have the Portuguese sniffles.
They have the big words by them, Brian.
It's also the tradition that, that we introduce the chair as our fearless leader.
All caps.
Yeah, you may not.
We'll, we'll go with that, but let's, you know, who knows? I could be stuck in the Azores and not, not be able to fly home, so.
Oh gee, that'd be horrible.
Really?
You know, have another sardine or something, or whatever. Yeah, seafood, yes. Anything else anyone needs to discuss? I'm sorry, it's almost 10 o'clock. What a night. But we did, we, we got through two, two very interesting hearings.
This, this is, this is what we sign up for.
Well, you, you know, I, I, I was speaking with Sue the other day and I said, you know, for months after you came in, you probably thought, God, these, these people are doing nothing. And it's be careful, as we said, it's been so quiet and here we have two hearings, there's contentious and attorneys in one and, yeah, yeah.
So Brian, just so I'm sure I understand, we won't take up the topics from those two hearings until November 7th, at which time we will be discussing, thinking about conditions, decisions, next step, right?
Yeah, and it may not be the 7th. We, we have leeway to.
The 90 days that you mentioned begins from today with the closed public hearing? Okay, all right.
No need to, we don't want to put these things off just because.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just want to get it straight.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's to file it with the clerk, not to make a decision. So you have to make a decision and then.
Yeah, and, and now that I, I didn't realize that we had our Dodson and Flinker folks that night, so. I'm not sure. Yeah. Okay, everyone. That's good. Thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All in favor?
Good night.
Bye.
Done. See you later. Take care.
All right. Take care. Good trip, Rob.